All right, we are back in open session. At this point, we have a welcoming statement from Principal Kim Heffner.
Welcome all of the board members. Welcome to Hollywood. We are always grateful when you come join us here. We're very proud of our little school and the work that we do here for all of our kiddos. So, thank you for coming and joining us here.
Thanks, Ms. Heffner. At this point, is there any public comment? There's no public comment. Does any board member have any proposed changes to the agenda? If not, then we have one item of old business. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution regarding the residency matter discussed in closed session, finding that three students are not residents and finding that tuition is owed on attendance during the current school year?
So, second.
Would the Board Secretary like to read the resolution?
Yes. "Resolution Regarding Residency of Students. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Riverside School District 96, Cook County, Illinois, that in regard to the residency of the students named in the minutes of the closed session immediately preceding the adoption of this resolution, the students as follows. Number one, the Board has fully considered the report of Hearing Officer dated October 20th, 2017. Number two, the Board finds and determines that the students have not been residents of the school district since the start of the 2017 to 2018 school year. Accordingly, the Board determines that students shall be disenrolled from attendance in school District 96 effective at the close of school on November 9th, 2017. Tuition shall be charged in the amount of $10,599.60 for the period of attendance of the students during the 2017-2018 school year. The superintendent shall give notice of this decision by providing a copy of this resolution to the parents. Number four, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption."
Thanks, Joel. At this point, is there any discussion of this resolution? If not, Margie, please go ahead.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. So, at this point, we move on to the committee of the whole meetings, and the first committee meeting is education. Sherry?
Okay, we're going to hear about, from Ms. Brownlow, a student achievement presentation and then professional development. Two big items.
Yeah. And Mira, I'm just going to interject. So, this is a really important, all of our conversations are important, but tonight when we take this opportunity to do this snapshot of student achievement, I want to just talk about the importance and kind of our purpose in looking at broad district-level data around student achievement. So, we know that as a, you all as a board and as a community, that this is one of the most important things that we do, is to assure that all of our students are in fact learning and successful here in District 96. But we know that this is only a snapshot and it's a relatively brief overview in the grand scheme of things, that you're going to hear tonight, that there are both celebrations and areas of concern in our student data. The other thing that we know as a district is that we find that there is variability between our buildings, between our classrooms, and we know certainly between our students. And that we want to assure you that although tonight's presentation is really focused on that broad district-level data lens, that there are conversations that happen at the buildings, at the classroom, at the individual student level, to really assure that all of our students are on a, you know, strong trajectory of, towards success. So, I wanted to just kind of use that as a reminder, as how we look at this and why we look at this information as a community and as a board tonight. So, thanks.
I just brought some visuals as reinforcement. Like, these three folders represent the math folder, the reading folder, and the district-wide RTI, Multi-Tierred System of Support folders. And there are reports that dive really deep into details and goal areas. And these are the things that at the district-level leadership team, we are digging into. And so, if I had to dig into all of that tonight with all the charts and graphs that we're all analyzing, we'd be here probably till tomorrow morning. So, we're going to keep it up here. I did try, in this presentation, to give you some snapshots of how we do that. So, in the context of the slides I'll share, I'll speak to that a little bit, and you can ask questions certainly as we move forward. So, tonight, we're taking a district-wide view, as Ms. Ryan Toye said, of the data as it relates to the release of the district school report cards, which came out today, officially last night at midnight. And in addition to that data, where Park data is reported, we are also going to be looking at our Multi-Tiered System of Support data, because that is a really important initiative that we have funded through our intervention work in both math and reading. And so, we want to look at how those systems are working and progressing, as well as part of our achievement profile. We will also be talking a little bit about our MAP data, the NWA MAP assessment that's given three times a year as benchmarks for our students as well. So, we'll be talking about those as well. And as I mentioned, our leadership team spends a ton of time looking at and analyzing data to take those deeper dives, to really look at specific areas of concern and also our celebrations, so that we can continue to improve what we're doing in District 96. So, I want to start with a little bit of a demographic history and profile, because these things are important in terms of how we're choosing program, what we're looking for in our core programs, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all our learners. And this data is reported as part of the school report card. So, what we look for in this data are subgroups that are growing, because as we look at our achievement, if we have subgroups that comprise large percentages of our population, we want to make sure that we're not seeing gaps in their achievement versus the overall achievement of the district. So, just to note, over the last three years, we've had a pretty stable profile for the last three years. But prior to that, over the last seven years, we've had some major shifts. So, in 2014, the low-income percentage in District 96 was only at 8.7 percent. And it doubled to 15.8 percent in about 2014. And then, so 8.7, I'm sorry, in 2010. 2014, it doubled to 15.8 percent. And then, today, it's at 17.5 percent. So, it's been creeping up even in the last three years. But that major jump in 2014, which was just three seasons, three assessment seasons ago, was a big one. So, it's something that we just note, because we've started to now track that subgroup of low-income students, to make sure that we're not getting gaps in their performance. In addition to that subgroup, we're also tracking data with our Hispanic population. That population since 2010 has almost doubled. We were at 18.2 percent in 2010, and today, we're at 30.3 percent Hispanic students. So, that's another subgroup we want to pay attention to, just to make sure that we're not seeing gaps in their achievement that you might see traditionally in systems. So, you'll see some of those broken out today with respect to the Park data when we go through this presentation. So, to start, we're going to start with our MTSS program, which was formerly known as Response to Intervention, or RTI. MTSS stands for a Multi-Tiered System of Support. And I'm going to walk you through this slide. I know there's a lot of numbers up here, but I'll try to simplify it for you. Basically, MTS, for those board members that are new at the table and may not have heard me talk about this before length, it's a system of support that provides a structure for identifying students that may benefit from support or enrichment, using universal screening information as our basic indicator. So, you heard me talk about the MAP assessment that a lot of you are familiar with, because those reports come home. We have other benchmarks that we use that are more local, like the AIMS Web, which monitors reading fluency and math computation. So, we have a triangulation of a bunch of data points that we look at when we're looking at our system of support. Our schools meet in teams with all the service providers and the classroom teachers by grade level, and they determine appropriate instructional programming based on screeners and the students' classroom performance. This graphic represents the levels of support within the system. So, the students needing support are represented on the left side, on those tier twos and tier threes of the slide. And on the far right are students that may benefit from some enrichment. So, based on the research behind the model for Multi-Tiered Systems of Support, districts strive to have a majority of their students in that tier one category, where your core curriculum is meeting the majority of students' needs. And that's the idea behind a model system. So, when you're looking at the MTSS research models, they're showing you that you should have anywhere from 70 to 80 percent of your students' needs met in that tier one. And that's what those green boxes are. They represent those model percentages that districts strive for. From fall to spring in any given year, by the end of spring, you're looking to make sure that you have no more than 5 percent of your students really struggling at that lowest, that highest intensity of support. And typically, districts will have 3 to 5 percent of the students that are outside of the box and need some enrichment in their programming. So, for us, we look a little different than a typical district, in that the 15 to 16 percent of the students that are identified as needing something different for enrichment purposes, in that blue box all the way to the right, those are our students that are formally identified for services in Quest, in grades three, four, and five, both in ELA and math. So, in math, it's 15 percent of the kids that are identified, and in ELA, it's 16 percent of the kids. And that's why it says 15 to 16. And there also represents the students that participate in the advanced classes at Howser Junior High. At the lower end of students where we are providing support, these percentages represent by spring of 2017, so by the end of last year, where we stood. And on the next slide, you'll see where we started, and I'll take you back. But by the end of the year, we had between math or reading, 1 to 4 percent of students in that highest intensity of support, 4 to 7 percent that were within that tier two range, and that fluctuated between reading support and math intervention. So, thus, the range. So, if I take you to the next slide...
Can you ask one more question?
Yes.
Where is our tier two? Do we not have a tier two?
For, oh, for the enrichment side. So, the enrichment, that's a good question. Thank you. I actually had it in my notes. See, I should just stick to my script. It would be much better. So, in that tier two, Ms. Kleiber pointed out that I don't have a separate box. That's because we know there are students that require differentiation in the core curriculum, that are above-average students, but they are not formally identified. So, we don't have a formal metric for tracking tier two at the higher end. And most districts do not have a formal subgroup of above-average. But we know that within our core curriculum, we know who those students are when we do our data check-ins and we do our pre-assessments with our core curriculum, to say, "Oh, you've mastered the content I'm about to deliver. I better do some enrichment with you," because you're not formally identified for replacement programming. So, that can ebb and flow within the system, in terms of who needs that support and when they need it. So, it's not a formally identified tier.
But whoever designed the system utilizes a tier two?
So, in the models...
Yeah, do they provide...
Yeah, in the models, they don't. They don't provide like a structure to say, "This is how you should meet the needs of tier-two learners." They're acknowledging that there is a group of students that are between that core and that higher, highest level of intervention for enrichment, that probably need something different on a regular differentiated cycle within a classroom.
Can you tell me the tier-three numbers from last year?
From 2016? I don't have them with me, but I have them in last year's presentation. They were, we were under, we were under 5 percent as well at the end of last year. In tier two, we were under those percentages, both 2016 and 2017, that I can tell you. I don't know the exact percentages. We've been very successful at getting down to those levels by spring. In the fall, we have not always been above, at that level. We've been a little bit above, like at 11 percent. And you'll see on the next slide, even in 2016. So, if you look at tier two there in ELA, we started at 7 percent of the students being identified for tier-two services and 4 percent of tier three. And at the beginning of the year in math, we started with 7 percent of the students in tier two and 2 percent in tier three. The year before, I can tell you this, those were a little higher, but I don't have the exact percentages. So, I could get those back to you from the presentation from last year to compare.
And that's that left side of tier two?
Correct. Left tier two and tier three, yeah.
I think that's why I wrote two separately, just to say, I think this diagram looks confusing. Like, why not just one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'm trying to work within what the model language is. Yeah. So, this tier two and tier three is our support tier two and tier three. Yeah. Sorry, I should have put that on the slide. But yes. So, this is the data that we track with respect to support, to see if our system is working with our at-risk students.
That's helpful.
I apologize. Now, I know what you're asking me. Okay. So, this is what we track intensely, in terms of making sure that the interventions are working, because we have all these math interventionists and these reading specialists that are working with these kids. We want to make sure that what we're doing is working. So, within here, you'll see that by spring of 2017, in reading, which is the English Language Arts ELA, 4 percent of the students were still receiving services, you know, starting this fall, and 2 percent in tier three, and then 4 percent in math and 1 percent in tier three. So, we did reduce the percentages of students that were requiring that support. I put the raw numbers of students that actually exited services completely. So, we exited 114 students, and we exited in reading and 109 students in math. The next row down talks about the percent of students receiving services that exited. So, of all the students receiving services, 69 percent of students in reading exited, 14 percent in math, I mean, in tier three. So, we actually exited 10 reading students from tier three. And we exited 16, I think, wait, I have my number. Hold on. And we exited 13 math students from tier three to tier one. So, that's a huge jump, and I wanted us to acknowledge that. So, in total, between students reducing tiers, so I also look at, did you go from tier three to tier two? Did you go from tier two to tier one? So, I look across all of those. 62 percent of the students receiving services over the course of the entire school year, 62 percent reduced or exited in reading, 70 percent reduced or exited in math. What I also want everybody to understand is that ebbs and flows, because you can get kids exiting in winter and new kids entering in winter, which is why I don't use raw number data there, because it could look like nobody's exited, because we exited 10 but took five in. So...
Can you talk about what data would lead them to be exited? Is it a benchmark assessment? Is it a standardized assessment?
Okay, that's a really great question.
How do we know when they're ready to go?
So, in a data meeting, what we do is we start with our standardized benchmark assessments. So, we meet every six weeks to look at data, but we don't typically exit kids until we get to the benchmark periods. So, we're monitoring and maybe reducing some services. And then, every winter, so we relook at all kids to determine who's maybe ready to be exited. And in the interim, they could have had services reduced between fall and winter, and then we do that again, winter to spring. When we look, we use our AIMS Web data, which is our reading fluency and our math computational data. So, we're looking at those benchmark assessments. We are also looking at what's called Fanta's and Pennell for students in grades kindergarten, first and second. And that's a reading, a second reading measure that also looks at comprehension, as well as their decoding ability. We also look at, excuse me, the MAP scores, because we do a winter MAP benchmark assessment. So, we're looking at that. And then, when we sit around the data table, and Ms. Legary and Ms. Heffner can attest to this, we look at all that, but then we talk about classroom performance also, in relationship to the data. Does the classroom performance match what the data is telling us? Do we have unit assessments? And we look at the students' performance in comparison to grade-level expectations on unit assessments and mathematics. In ELA, it'll be on some of those performance-based assessments at the end of a unit, now that we have a core curriculum, or in past years', prior years', common assessments that they're doing. Also, at the primary level, there are foundational skills assessments. So, they're looking at sight words. They're looking at phonics assessments that have to do with letter-sound relationships, things like that. So, all of that is taken into consideration. And I always say this, when we are looking at Multi-Tiered Systems of Support, the standardized assessments are a consideration. Then we have a conversation about all those other things that I just talked about, and then we decide identification.
And that's through a team of people?
That is through a whole team of people. So, you have, your classroom teachers are sitting at the table, your math interventionist, your reading specialist. We have a social worker at the table. The EL teacher is at the table. We often have a special educator at the table, and psychologist is at the table, because we're also problem-solving in those meetings. So, when we see students who might benefit from either enrichment or support, all of those people are lending ideas to how we might support those students. So, it's really a whole problem-solving process that we go through in looking at this data.
You might not know this off the top of your head, but so if you don't...
I'll tell you if I don't.
...of these kids that are exiting the service.
Oh, you're taking my thunder away. Wait, I'm going to answer that. I know what you're going to ask me. So, this fall, I go back in the fall and I pull all the data of the exited students to see if anybody else ends up back in services. Were you going to ask me that?
No, no.
Okay, then ask your question. I was going to get so excited. Go ahead, ask your question.
As I say, of these kids that are exiting the services, what percentage of them meet expectations on the Park test?
Yeah, that, so these students that are in these services are not on a trajectory to meet expectations necessarily. These are our most at-risk students. So, when they're exiting, if they're not exiting till January or till April, most of them would, I haven't done it kid by kid, and I could, and I will, but I haven't done that. But my, my overall sense, and Kim, you might be able to speak to this a little bit, is that they end up closer to the approaching, you know, in that, in those levels three area, not level four quite yet, because they're just getting to where they're accessing core. And so, when you're just getting to tier one, you're now ready to access core grade-level expectation instruction. Prior to that, you were being supplemented to get you to grade-level expectation. So, that's why I think our Multi-Tiered System of Support data is really important, because these aren't kids that, when they're identified for that extra support, are on that trajectory to meet expectations. And in the second year, if they've been exited for a full year after this work, then you would expect them to be getting closer to meeting that grade level, because they haven't had that focused core instruction at grade level during this intervention time. They've been getting supplemental instruction to pull them up to that level. But I could do that analysis. That would be interesting to look at. I'd be interested, now that you asked that question, to tease that out. So, I'll do that. It'll give me a little time, because I have to pull the kids one by one. But what is interesting, so I think this is interesting, Dr. Miller, that you posed that question. What I was going to say is I went back and looked at fall data to see if any kids over the summer could regress and slip back into services, because that can happen as well, especially if we're just exiting them in the spring, and then they don't do anything all summer, and then you get them back in the fall, and you're like, "Oh, they're back in." But what was cool is 86 percent of our students that exited reading stayed in tier one this fall, and 81 percent of our students in math stayed in tier one this fall. And the other wonderful thing about that is anybody that slipped back into services, so it was, you know, 15, 16 students back in reading services and about 20 students back in math from those 100 that we exited, they all are only at tier two. Nobody slipped back to tier three from those exited students. So, that was very encouraging, because you would expect you'd have some fluctuation, but to see that many students benchmarking after summer and maintaining that tier-one status, that's really strong performance. You know, I've been in situations in districts where you don't see them retaining that intervention success at the same rates, and you expect some to come in and out, especially when they just get to tier two and they're just getting out. But I feel like that's a very high rate of success. And we had similar success the year before with between 80 and 85 percent of our students maintaining their performance once they're exited. So, that's great. It'll take a little longer probably to get them to expectations on something like Park. They'd be quicker to start showing growth on MAP, because of the procedural nature and isolated skill. But I will do that analysis, because I'd be curious. I might prove myself wrong, but we'll see. Okay. So, that's MTSS. From there, I started to analyze MAP for us. And just as a reminder, MAP gives us a couple of different measures that we look at. One is a status measure, so how student scores compare to average scores in other schools, and then growth metrics. Anything in growth that's above the 50th percentile from NWA is considered above-average performance, because what they're doing is setting a growth target for you and expecting you to meet that growth target. Status, 75th percentile is considered the top-performing quartile. It's a really high bar, but I just want to break that down. So, when your status metrics are between the 50th and 75th, you're considered, you know, an average-performing district. When you get up above that as a status measure, you're high-performing. Our status scores, I didn't spend a lot of time pulling data on, because we tend to be above the 85th percentile in terms of our status. And that means where's our average score in relationship to all other districts that take the MAP assessment? So, we know we're okay with status. It's the growth that we're really wanting to analyze. And just, this is just a norm reference chart, and I put it here, because when they develop norms for standardized assessments, they develop them on those bell curves to figure out the quartiles of where students fall out. And that's what the bell curve represents. The chart on the right represents how our students fall out, sort of in a baseline performance. So, when we're doing our fall benchmarks and we get that baseline data, our students fall out in an upward curve trend. So, we have about 24 percent of our students that fall out in that top decile, between the 90th percentile and above, in terms of that status performance. So, they're starting out at the higher end, when they're taking the assessment. And that's, that's a point of interest, because the higher you are on the RIT chart, which is the measure that NWA MAP uses to measure students, the lower the growth target for you. So, it's just something I point out, so that as we're looking at that, sometimes when we get up to eighth grade and we're talking about our highest-performing eighth graders, we're talking, meeting growth means two points or three points in this assessment. Okay.
Well, I'm skeptical that most districts would be a bell curve at all. I think...
Well, I'm not saying districts are a bell curve. I'm saying that's how they're normed.
No, but even if they're using that for the norms, I'm very skeptical. I think that's a mistake.
Yeah. Well, it depends on the districts, because, you know, when they norm things and they're norming things on a bell curve to get, you know, averages, that's why you saw when they've renormed, their norms have gone up, because their population of people taking the test has changed. So, even though they're norming on a bell curve, they're norming a higher-profile set of districts, in terms of where student performance is. So, we'll look at our data a little bit, and I'm going to show it to you in two different ways. I'm going to show you cohort data that takes the kids from the spring of the grade level before to the spring of where this data ended.
Can you review, especially we have, maybe nobody, everyone knows, but what a cohort is for the grade level?
Yes. So, a cohort means I'm taking the same group of students minus the ones that have transferred in or out. But we're looking at, so for example, the spring of fifth grade, and we're comparing it to the spring of sixth grade. So, on this chart, that's why there's no grade-two data, because grade-two is the first year students take the assessment. So, last year's second graders in the spring, there was nothing to compare it to the spring before, because first graders don't take it. So, the third-grade bar here represents second graders in 2016 to third graders this past spring. The fourth-grade bar is from third grade to fourth grade, what the growth looked like, and so on. The diamond represents the target. So, that's the expected growth, when you're looking at the spring of the grade level below to the spring of the grade level they just completed. And then, the blue bar represents what we actually grew. So, what's interesting about this is you're looking at a year's growth. So, you're, you have the summer in there, but then you're looking at from the spring, where they ended in that grade level before, where did they end in the next grade level? And so, in looking at that cohort data, it's helpful to see from an instructional lens where we are with a group of students. And so, in this, I started with math. You'll see 63 percent of students met growth versus 57 percent of that same cohort the year before. So, if I look at those students the year before, and we looked at cohort data, only 57 percent of students in the cohort data met. And this year, 63 percent did, and this is math. And you're going to see later on, when I talk about Park, we had strengths in math, MAP, and not the same level of strengths showed up in Park, and I have some hypotheses about that. And then, the reverse in ELA. We had weaker performance in ELA on MAP and a little bit stronger performance relative, I will call it, in Park. And so, it's just interesting to see kind of where the, where the opportunities are. As Martha said earlier, there's a lot of variability, you know, in the data, in the classrooms, in the grades, and that's true even in the measures. So, if you're looking at this, there's a change in the platform that I want to mention from fifth to sixth grade. So, you'll see when I look at a year of data versus a cohort of data, differences in how the growth looks. From fifth to sixth, the test changes. It goes to a more difficult platform, where the passages are longer for reading and the problems are multi-step for mathematics. And also, in the standards, in the sixth-grade standards, particularly in math, but ELA as well, sixth grade is a huge year for new standards that weren't seen in fifth grade. So, what'll happen is if you have a higher-performing kid in fifth grade, and they come into fall or into sixth grade, they're going to start to see questions that they haven't had any they haven't had any background in or instruction in.
Is that really true, though? Because the Quest kids in fifth grade are currently, or at least a couple of years ago, were doing the sixth grade material.
They're, they're starting some sixth grade.
So why would they not have seen it?
That's a small, that's a really small group of the total percentage, but they're not, they're doing a com, they're doing a compacted curriculum, so they're not getting as deep as if they were spending a whole entire year on sixth grade standards.
No, but-
So they're not, you know-
A pretty big discrepancy.
Well, and I'm going to get to some of the other points around that. It is. It's bigger than we'd like. I'm not saying it's, it's explaining all of it. It explains some of it. And what they also say in the study from 2015 from MAP is that the higher the performing, the higher the performer, the bigger the drop. And that's because they're getting seventh grade level questions in the adaptive assessment versus sixth. So standards. So when they get a question correct, the next question gets harder. So if they're starting harder, so there's a 2015 study that sort of describes this phenomenon from fifth to sixth. But that being said, I'm not saying that explains why we are here. I'm saying it's a piece of it.
Because we should know that happens to the test. We've been doing this a few years.
Correct. Well, but we haven't dug down into, that study was only released in 2015 in terms of the impact of that. And I would say, we haven't intentionally diagnosed where those gaps are for those highest performing kids. So I think that's one of the things I say in my notes, is, yeah, is that we can look more intentionally at where content is falling short on these assessments, and where we may not be touching enough of that content in our instruction.
Yeah, they may not have seen it.
Correct.
I think I read that study that you're referring to, and I, my takeaway was not that there's anything, I initially saw these kind of plots, I thought the same thing, which is like, this is disastrous, sixth grade is terrible. But after reading that study, my takeaway, and maybe I'm wrong about this, is that because the test format changes, as you said, NWA has, has problems normalizing the test properly.
Correct.
They can get the average right, but they can't get, because there's a distribution, there's no way, with a simple transformation, you can get, so, so what happens in practice is the kids that are the strongest students, the best test scores in the old test, end up looking way worse. It's just totally an artifact of their-
Correct. And that has to do, yeah, I'm saying the same thing, but in a different way. It's because of the adaptability and the nature of the assessment takes them to a place on that new platform where they haven't been exposed to any of that.
So I'm not thinking about hearing that for everybody, so you're saying that this, that fifth gr, or I'm sorry, the sixth grade drop is something that we see every year, essentially?
It's something that we'll see, maybe not to that extreme, though. I think we'll see it every year, and we have seen it. If you look at longitudinal data, there's dips in sixth grade, but, but I'm saying, I still think there's opportunity within there to be a little closer, because, you know, as you'll see, if you look at just a year of data, so this is spring to spring, this is a good segue, thank you, Mr. Hunt. If you look at this next slide, which looks at within a grade level year, this takes into consideration where the kids start in the fall and where they end in the spring. So it eliminates that fifth grade score, that spring fifth grade score, and rebaselines them based on a fall score to set a growth target. So the growth targets on this side, slide, are set based on that average score in fifth grade. The growth targets on this slide are set based on that average score in the fall of sixth. So you see our bars in sixth grade don't look as dramatically different as that other one did, because they're taking into consideration where they're starting in sixth grade. And so now the test is adapting for where they are on that new platform. Whereas in this bar, it's adapting based on the score from the old platform.
Dare I say, like, I think we could do a really good job in the future, or a better job communicating to the parents about that significant moment, because it could be really scary if you get these scores, what happened, you know?
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you.
And it's mainly because of a format change in the test, you know?
And what's really interesting is I had to dig for that report when Dr. Miller started asking the questions. It's not like NWA pushed it out and said, oh, here's your explanation. When I started digging and asking questions about sixth grade data, you know, you've seen that pattern. We knew, I knew the format changed, and I always attributed it somewhat to that. But I, what I didn't recognize was with the Common Core standard shift, that's when it really became magnified for districts in that 2014, 1314 year, when they shifted the platform from the old version of MAP to the Common Core version, and they realigned the item bank to be standard, Common Core standard aligned. That's when they decided to do that study, because all of a sudden, they saw even a bigger drop. And so then that study came out in 2015, saying, oh, well, this is what happened. We can't calibrate the test, you know, based on a fifth grade score well enough to show that growth. So from, that's why I also show this data. And this also shows data from our second graders, right, within a school year, because you can't get cohort data there in terms of how they are performing. So when you look at these graphs, you're seeing just a school year's worth of data from fall to spring. And what I wanted to talk about here is within a school year, we are seeing percentage, the percentage go up from the percentage that met and exceeded from the year before. But again, now you're factoring all your new second graders that are leading to that percentage. So here, we would have 59% of the students meeting or exceeding in 2017, and we had 55% exceed in 2016. But it's not apples to apples, because you're always getting a new second grade group into the data. So I'm careful about saying, oh, we went up, when I, I know it's a new group of kids. But it's just, we want to try to keep striving for that 60, 60 to 65%. I say 65% on MAP, because I feel like procedurally, now that we have really strong core resources, we should be able to make those gains to get closer to 65% of our students meeting growth. But that will take some time, because we know also in math, and this data is stronger than what our Park data reflected, so we are seeing some strong gains in math. But what I also know is that this assessment is very procedural in nature, and it's very different than the complexity that the math questions require on Park. So we're looking for that transfer of what, of what we've started to build, which is some procedural skill-based knowledge, to that application, taking those concepts and applying them to more complex problems on Park. And right now, what you have to remember is, yes, we're in year three at the middle school with Carnegie, and you'll see like, seventh and eighth grade scores, you know, are starting to really look better. But what we also have to know is our fifth graders, we're, we're still filling scope and sequence gaps of skills that weren't in place before we transitioned to our new core materials, because the materials we had before didn't have the breadth and depth of the skill instruction that Math in Focus is offering now. So we're hoping that the core resource is one component of what might improve our, our scores over time. There are a lot of factors. There's nothing black and white that you can say, oh, this will be it. You know, you need high-quality instruction. You know, this Ryan Toye used this analogy, you can have high-quality tools, but you need a high-quality teacher to actually take those tools and implement them. She talks about a surgeon, you know, you can have all the great tools in the world, but if you're not a skilled surgeon, the tools don't matter, right? So same thing with teaching and learning. So we want to look at all those components when we're trying to diagnose what, how we can make gains. So we're still working on that conceptual piece, and we'll talk a little bit about that with Park. In reading, we saw a dip in the cohort percentages meeting, meeting their growth targets in ELA overall. You see in third grade, they look fine, the second to third graders look fine, and the third to fourth graders met that target, and fourth to fifth. You see the eighth grade had a bit of a dip. And we can, you know, question the motivation of eighth graders in the spring around assessments when we look at data, but in reality, we know our kids, even with that, should probably be doing better than what is reflected here. There's a lot of inconsistency in the core resources that were being implemented prior to this adoption, and that's part of the reason we went after an adoption. And I will also tell you that in eighth grade, they, out of the middle school pilot, had the least exposure to the new materials. They only got in parts of a unit and then part of another unit, because of the timing of the pilot, started in January. And so because of the existing units of instruction they were trying to implement, they didn't get an opportunity to do as much instruction with the new materials in the pilot as, whereas seventh grade got three full units of instruction in with the new materials. So that, I think, again, there's pieces of the puzzle here that we can look at, but we know that, we spent a day diagnosing the eighth grade scores, both in MAP and Park, with the eighth grade team, with some support from our ELA consultant, Laura Belchinko. And we really looked at where, what we taught, and you'll see in Park as well, eighth graders, where they hit it heavy, they had some nuggets of celebration, like irony as a standard. They did really well on the irony standard, and they spent a whole unit on irony. But irony is not a major focus in the new content, right? And there's probably only two questions on irony when you're looking at the standards. And so that's that balance of where are we sinking the instructional focus, and the new material should help funnel us to show improvements there. So this is just within a school year, and you can see that one cohort of students also wasn't the highest performing cohort in seventh grade either. If you look at 2016 seventh graders and 2017 eighth graders, that cohort was struggling prior to coming to eighth grade. So that's something else we look at, like, who were those kids? Why did they struggle? What were their profiles? And that's some of the things that, that Mrs. May and Mrs. Mullin and the team at Howzer dig into when they see those kinds of trends. So we're working on looking at that as well. So that's MAP. That brings us to Park.
So, just to come back to the MAP, fair statement to say that in the MAP, sort of, scores overall, there's some real improvements in Howzer MAP, MAP scores.
Yes, yes. And I got that at the end, yes. The seventh grade especially, yeah, seventh and eighth grade especially.
But everything else, math in the elementary schools, English in elementary, and Howzer are pretty flat over the deck.
Well, math MAP, I wouldn't say that for our third graders, second to third, the kids who have just started to have Math in Focus and only Math in Focus. I would tell you that-
In aggregate, take the aggregate.
Yeah, in the aggregate, we still have work to do, for sure. Yeah. But where we're seeing where they didn't have as many gaps to fill, so like, our third graders, if you look at this cohort, those kids had second grade one year, third grade, and less gaps to fill, because they started Math in Focus in second grade. Whereas if you take, like, even though we're meeting growth in that cohort, if you look at, like, fifth grade, right, and came from fourth in the year before, those, so when you look at year-to-year data?
Yeah, that's reading. Can we look at the MAP?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there. If you look at fourth grade, yeah, sorry, thank you, Sharon. If we look at fourth grade in 2016 and third grade in 2016, they had, you know, not, they didn't have Math in Focus, and there's more gaps there. So as you look at the 2017 within a school year, we're starting to creep up where in cohort data, you're seeing those gains start to show up. Like, if you look at spring to spring, third of 16, they had, excuse me, one, one year of Math in Focus, and they met their, their benchmark growth. And fourth grade had two years, and, you know, and, and the scores, and you start to see those creep up in that cohort. So I would say we're starting to see it in math, in MAP, in that procedural skill level, overall. When you look within a single year, I think the single year data is deceiving compared to that cohort, you know, where you're looking to start to see that we're making those gains in math. Okay, then in reading, you know, we just talked about that, too, the similar opportunities. I do think we have work to do. I mean, don't get me wrong, because I also think math is very procedural. And when we look at the Park math, we're not there, because we have to take all of those skills now and start transferring them into an application, conceptual, problem-solving opportunity, which is what Park requires. Park is not asking you straight-up procedural math questions about how you solve a multiplication or division problem. You're, you're having to tease that out and create the problem to solve it, so. So when we get into Park, just a reminder that we test ELA and we test mathematics, and we're looking at five levels, five performance levels, with level five being the highest in terms of exceeding. And there's variability in the cut scores for that highest level, so I put the range there. But the minimum scores for all the rest of the performance levels stay the same, grade level to grade level. So first, we just look at combined. This is reported on the school report card, overall, ELA and math performance. And we had a slight uptick. Was it a huge uptick? No. It sort of mimics the state trend, maybe a little bit above the straight state trend, because we went up a percentage point, 1.3. The state went up 0.7 in terms of overall composite. But that being said, and it is in aggregate, and we have a lot to do, there are little highlights that I do want to point out. So this assessment is given in grades three through eight. In our district, there, that would mean 12 indicators, right? 12, there's six grade levels of ELA, six grade levels of MAP. And in there, six of those 12 indicators did have students that were, where we had students performing 60 to 62% of them, meeting or exceeding in half of the indicators. So while we're at 56.4% aggregate, we have work to do, we know we do, there are some pockets where we're starting to creep up over that 60% meeting and exceeding within grade level data. So that's something I just want everybody to know, is we're not, there's other places where it's lower, and so it's pulling us down, and those are opportunities. But we do also have some pockets where we're doing better. So some of those pockets are, grade three and four in both ELA and mathematics had 60% or more of students meeting or exceeding, and grade five and seven in ELA had more than 60% of students meeting or exceeding. And so when we're looking at some of those things, grade three had the most amount of teachers piloting the new materials as well. So you'll hear a little bit about that later, but we definitely saw some improvements in grade three ELA as a result of those pilot teachers. So some of the variability also comes from the fact that we haven't had consistent resources in ELA in classrooms until this year. And then in mathematics, some of it is, as I said, we still have that higher level thinking that we really need to tend to, and watch how we're now taking kids from having skills to transferring them for problem-solving purposes. As I share it, I'm going to highlight some of the goal areas that we dig down into and look at within Park. So we're going to start with math.
I have one quick question about the format. Do you think somebody uptick for the state as well could just be the fact we've had consistent exam for two years?
That too. That helps. Kids are used to the format?
Used to the format. And I have a question. Do you think that format will remain the same from now?
Okay, so you might have heard, so there's, there's talk out there that Park is going away. So what's happening right now at the state is Pearson no longer has the contract after this spring. So we'll have one more year of Park in the platform as we know it. What they're talking about for 2019, and this is what's been so hard, right, about this data in general, is in 2015, it was a two-session test, March and May. It was more, it was longer, and now it, in 16 and 17, it's been the same test for those two years. And now we'll have it one more year, and then it'll go away. And it's not completely, though. So the item bank is going to remain the same. They're selling the item bank to whatever vendor ends up being the one chosen to provide the platform for the assessment. So how that vendor will reconfigure the actual platform, we don't know. But the item banks, in terms of what the students are going to be tested on, will remain the same and aligned to standards. So it's hard to predict. I mean, Mrs. Ryan Toye was at a meeting today saying, oh, now they might give it three times a year instead of once. Nobody really is sure yet.
What about length, many days?
We don't know any of that for the new, because it's a year away. We'll be giving this.
I know. I was just, maybe you've heard something.
But that was, so I was at a conversation with the State Board of Ed, Director of Assessment this morning, and that was the conversation, is do we want to return to like, a fall benchmark, January growth, spring summative assessment, which is Park, you know, that was kind of where Park was in 2015. They actually did just two administrations. So my sense was, there's still a lot of questions, sort of being posed again around state-level assessment.
Didn't that greater number of tests encourage more resistance on the parent's side?
For sure.
So why would-
The balance of time for instruction, time for assessment, that was really the big public outcry.
Why would they think it's a good idea to go to three?
I don't know, Joel.
Remains to be-
Maybe rhetorical question.
Well, and if they decide that, would we have to do that? I don't know.
Yeah, would they make that an optional, or make, like, that's how, that's how Park started out, right? Like, at first, it was, you're going to have to do the spring, and it could be optional to do the fall, and then they weren't, didn't have their act together to, you know, implement it in that way, anyway. So that, yeah, thank you for posing that to get in front of that a little bit. No, and it's a good one, because I know, like, it's starting to float out there in sort of the educational circles, for sure. I don't know if it's made it to the-
I don't think it's out in the public.
Public sector, but yeah, that they are selling the platform, and so we have no idea what that platform will look like in 2019, is when we will change again. So there are definitely, this is the math Park data, and I've organized it by performance level. And Mrs. Kleber, thank you for pointing it out. I went back and backed the state data in. This data at a district level doesn't come in this format. I have to take all the grade level data and manually add up the number of students in these levels by grade level, and then aggregate it for us, because they just don't give it to us. They only give it to us by grade level. So when I'm giving you this big snapshot, I have to aggregate it. So I went back and aggregated the state. We're trending, you know, similar to the state in, in most- We're trending, you know, similar to the state in most areas, but I think we should be doing better because of who we are as District 96, so we will continue to work towards that. Within math, there are four goal areas that Park assesses. They're labeled major content strands, which is like the big, big ideas in your grade level. There's the supporting content strands, which are those strands that are, there aren't as many items on, but that they're measuring because they're the next level of information, of knowledge that you have to have to move to the next grade level. And then they measure your mathematical reasoning and your modeling with mathematics. And part of the adoption with Carnegie and with Math in Focus were that those programs also demand that kids show what they know with modeling and reasoning. And so, the way kids demonstrate their work is equally as important as the answers that they get. And so, we've actually seen some variability in some areas, some upticks in some subgoals. So, I'm going to talk about that a little bit. So, when we analyze this as a leadership team, we're looking at the cohort data in each of those 20 indicators in mathematics. So, there's four goal areas, five cohorts. We look at 3rd to 4th, 4th to 5th, 5th to 6th, 6th to 7th, 7th to 8th. So, we're looking at five cohorts, and we're looking at four goal areas within those cohorts to see how we're progressing, because we want to look at kids to kids. We don't want to look at grade to grade necessarily, because it's a different group of kids. So, in our analysis, we look at those 20 indicators, and overall in that cohort data, we had 13 of 20 in math that showed increases in percentages of students meeting or exceeding, and they mostly were from grades 4 to 5 and grades 6 to 7 and grades 7 to 8. So, in grades 4 to 5 and 6 to 7, all four goal areas showed increases of students meeting and exceeding, and in grades 7 to 8, three of the four. So, that's all great, but what it means is, where we're not getting that percentage of meeting and exceeding is, that's pulling us down. We really got to examine that, because we're showing increases in some grade levels and cohorts, but where are we, where within those goal areas are we falling short? And when we look at that, for us, sub, the subcut, the, not the supporting content, is the area where our kids fell short. And when I think about that and I think about our implementation and our scaffolding and filling gaps, that makes sense to me strategically, but it means we also have to look at that. And what's interesting is the supporting content in 6th grade and the supporting content in 3rd grade came after, the instruction last year came after the Park assessment. So, one of the things, especially at the middle school, they're focused on this, because in middle school, their content is so drilled down into specific standards, is are the kids retaining those other areas that they're supposed to be able to represent in their performance, both in map and in Park, from the grade before? So, they're doing things like, this year, like Throwback Thursday, and they're spending 10 minutes on the standards that they were taught from the grade level below that maybe don't reappear until later in the year, to make sure that the kids are retaining and ready for that instruction. Ms. Colani just mentioned, she just started her ratio and proportionality instruction for her 8th graders, and she was doing this Throwback Thursday with them specifically on that concept as she was preparing them. And she said she launched the unit, and there was a big difference from this year to last year, where last year she spent a week and a half reviewing vocabulary and the basic concepts that were precursors to what she was about to teach. And this year, because of keeping that fresh for kids, she was able to launch right into the instruction. So, she saved herself about a week of review by doing this little 10-minute Throwback Thursday where they would review those standards. So, things like that, that's the kind of work we're doing to say, how can we improve our performance?
Can I say one thing as a science teacher? I think like ratio and proportionality, you could very easily revisit these topics in a science class and then double up and not miss the science standard and then be getting an extra bump.
Yeah, and some of that...
You know, whether it's cell ratio and organelle sizes or whether it's, you know...
Right. And some of that is, and it's funny you said that, April and I were just talking about vertical and horizontal articulation, to have the whole building own the data, not just the math department.
It would be really cool to see, you know, to get, then to give the math classes time to just push ahead.
Yeah.
But still, you know, not to hold the sciences back, but I think it builds up their science content.
Yeah, so you're right, looking at those opportunities where we can share the data as a whole school, like we all own this data. These are all our kids. And so, where do we have those interdisciplinary intersections that we can capitalize on within our instruction?
I see some of that with my own daughter's classes too. They're kind of talking about those.
Yeah, we're trying to get at that more. So, so that's just some of the information related to that. But you see, like cohort 4 to 5, which I just mentioned to you, and cohort 6 to 7, they had nice overall increases from the year before in terms of their performance, 6 to 7 more so even than 4 to 5. But the other grade levels where we're kind of hovering, while 3 to 4 didn't dip a lot, it still dipped, you know, and where 5 to 6, we talked about before, you know, again, what are they not seeing in 5th grade that they're coming prepared to tackle the 6th grade material with? And so, you know, again, 7 to 8, not huge, but they're dips, and we don't want to see those dips.
And I guess my question is, would you predict in those greens and reds in advance, did you sort of expect 4 and 5 to be up and 3 and 5 and 6 to be down up priority, I mean, or not? I mean, I guess what I...
I don't expect anybody to be down, Jeff. Dr. Miller, I don't want anybody to be down.
I've looked at it six times, I'm going to get, you know, certain tails, so I just, to me, it feels like, it's not compelling to me that this is not just fluctuations between the cohorts.
Yeah, and it could be, you know, that's something it could be too. There's, like, we don't have enough trend data, right?
5 to 6, yeah, 5 to 6 is probably the only one that I would say is significant, statistically significant compared to the others, but then 6 to 7, then it's the same thing.
Yeah, and none of it, like, we don't have enough trend data to say, like, are we totally trending up or are we totally trending down or are we somewhere in the middle? Because we only have, you know, if you put throw 2015 in there, which I didn't just because of the platform check, but I could, you know, and I know you shared some additional graphs that kind of had 2015 in there too. We still see that variability as we're moving through the grade levels, trying to wrap our minds around, like, what is going to provide that consistency, right? And I do have to go back to, there's a bunch of things, right, when you asked me, and I think, Mrs. Kleiber, you asked me this a couple of meetings ago, like, what, when we were talking about technology, how can we point to what's improving student learning, right? It's not black and white, and it's not easy to take and extrapolate one of the factors and say, oh, that's it, because there's instruction, there's core resources, there's collaboration. You know, we talk about collaboration a lot. When the teachers are getting to come together now with a core resource that they have a common assessment built around, and they can look at how students did, the conversations are starting to become much richer and targeted to say, oh, what did you do? Oh, what did you do? Oh, what did you do? Why did your kids get that? I was with the 3rd grade team and they were looking at their common math assessment from Math in Focus, and they said, oh, the kids really got the fact that repeated addition was multiplication and that repeated subtraction is division. They did the procedural problems really well. However, when they got to those word problems and they had to construct the problem to solve, they didn't do so well. And so, they went back, and the classrooms that did well talked about what they did to break that strategy down, and that's powerful. You know, that's what improves teaching, when you get to have those rich conversations about, why did your kids do better than my kids or what did, what did you do that I didn't do? And that's the kind of stuff we do with all that. We dig in and say, oh, you had a lot of success here. What did you do when you taught them?
On the topic of collaboration, do you, as an administrator, talk to districts that have green on the board and say, what are you doing? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we talk about that all the time. Most districts, well, not most, I should say, a lot of, I know, River Forest had a weekly opportunity to collaborate when I was there, every Thursday, the whole entire team.
You just need to see, you know, what's happening there.
Yeah, in Lombard, we had PLC, the PLC model, which is a professional learning acronym for professional learning communities, and we had time built into the schedule for common...
But you're also asking sort of inter-district collaboration.
I'm talking inter-district, yeah.
Like curriculum directors have an opportunity.
What's happening there? What is different?
Yeah.
You know, not, nothing that is too different as far as our makeup or the type of district.
So, I will tell you, for me, the districts that I've talked to that have like more, higher percentages of students meeting, exceeding, they've had core program for longer. They, they've had some identified consistent core resources since about the three or four, five years that, you know, earlier than we have transitioned to the resources we have now. So, some of them are in, like, in Wellmat, they're in their fifth year with Math in Focus, I think, and they've now even began sort of personalizing that program now because they know it well enough to be able to start to make some tweaks and adjustments based on their data. And other place...
You need to see, not that you need any more graphs to make, but...
Yeah, so, no, but, you know, it's, I mean, that kind of conversation happens all the time in terms of like, what are you doing? And some of it is demographic, to be honest with you, some of those districts that are...
No, I mean, like, people that are like, that kind of look similar enough to us.
Yeah, so, it's, we're so unique. It's so hard to find districts that exactly match us. I do, I try really hard, like, to find ones that are somewhat similar, you know, in looking at it. And so, I pulled like 14 different districts. Some are like way more higher performing than we are, but I just want to know, like, what's happening with them and looking at where their scores are. There's variability across even the high-performing districts in terms of where their scores are this year. So, even when they may have higher percentages, some of them are dropping or going up or dropping or going up depending on the indicator or standard flag.
Yeah, just somebody that's consistently...
Yeah, so, these are the things, from that perspective, that I will tell you, people will say are working, and they're kind of, you're going to see them embedded in a video in a little bit, because they're the core things that we know. There's bodies of research that say that make a difference that districts are doing. One is to have high-quality resources, right? Good tools to deliver instructions. So, we're on that path, where we've got those things now specifically in ELA and math. Collaboration, teacher collaboration, and sharing strategies and conversations about how students are doing the work. That's another thing that people will say contributes to improved student achievement. And then, the third one is culture and climate. And while that's soft and it's qualitative and it's hard to wrap around, the bodies of research say that when culture and climates are safe and welcoming and inclusive and there's no distractions to learning, that students will perform better, you know.
Would you say we're lacking in that area? Because it seems like...
I, well, I would say there's always room to grow, and when I say that, I don't just mean physical safety.
No, I'm not saying...
Yeah, I mean academic safety, like the safety to take a risk, to put yourself out there, to try, you know, to give an answer that may be wrong and feel, and feeling safe enough to do that, because that is part of it. Like, if you don't have a tight enough community, our kids get along, but how well do they know each other that if I were to take a risk and put something out there to further my learning, that I might not get the response I'm looking for? I might be teased or I might be. So, it's that kind of culture and climate. We're trying to create that safe space where we want you to take risks. We, it's okay to make those mistakes, because that's how you're going to learn and grow. So, it's even those kinds of things that we're working on so that kids can feel free to do those things, right? Because we know that that makes a difference. So, the subgroups that I talked about before, I broke them down for us, both in math and ELA, and again, you know, Dr. Miller, to your point, is this variability, you know, 2%, 3%, we're talking about small percentages here in terms of growth or drops overall, but we still are going to look at it because we want to be conscious of it so that over the long term, as these trends, as we get more data and we can look at trends, if it lasts more than one more year with this assessment, but whatever it might be, we'll be able to extrapolate this. I've, I've this year asked the, in our data systems for MAP, to code our students so that we can disaggregate these two subgroups in the MAP data as well. So, we are now, in this school year, we'll be able to disaggregate that data in the MAP system as well. And then ELA, where in 2015, we saw much stronger performance, you know, dipped down in 2016, and now we're headed back up in 2017. We went from, you know, getting closer to back where the 2015 data was. And hard to say what, you know, again, I don't, I wasn't here in the 14, 15 school year to comment specifically on what was in place. I just know that there was a lot of variability in what was happening with instruction in ELA from the teachers and from their perspective in terms of use of resources, exploring resources. And so, it's, there wasn't consistency to say, oh, it was that in terms of what was happening in that year. So, in looking forward, I know that they are very happy to have some resources that actually allow them to differentiate, and that's what we've heard loud and clear in ELA. They were using similar resources for whole class prior to adopting what we have now, and they're getting back to the ability to really differentiate. And that's what I would say they'll point to as the biggest factor in kind of that dip and now being able to get back up, is that they were doing a lot of whole-class instruction in 14, 15, 15, 16, and now that they have resources that are more varied, they're going to be able to get back to that. So, within here, I wanted to point out a couple of goal areas that are important. The main area, both in MAP and Park in ELA, was vocabulary. That goal area showed up as an opportunity in both of those assessments. So, that also speaks to the level of text we might have been engaging in and the level of vocabulary instruction that was happening. The nice thing about the resources we adopted is there is rigor in the text, and we've heard that from 2nd grade teachers all the way up to 8th grade teachers. And there is explicit vocabulary instruction that's happening in those programs with these resources. So, I'm hoping that that will improve. But, again, we talk about those 20 cohort indicators. We did see increases in percentages of meeting and exceeding, and again, all in the context of slight variability, but there is, there are some, some bright spots. 11 of those 20 indicators had increases in percentages of students meeting and exceeding. In grade 3, where I had five teachers of the nine piloting, four out of five of those goal areas, so in ELA, there's literature, informational text, there's vocabulary, and then there's written expression and written conventions. Those are the five goal areas in ELA and Park. And of those, we had four out of five of those with 60% or more of students meeting or exceeding. Vocabulary was the one where they were a little lower in grade 3, and that's where we had the largest pilot. In written expression in grade 3, 70% of the students met or exceeded standards. And the 3rd grade teachers will tell you, there is a lot of writing in Ready Gen as they've been, as they piloted last year. They were coming out saying, I cannot believe the writing. And 2nd grade teachers will tell you that too, actually, when they piloted. The amount of writing that's embedded at the lower grades, I think we, we saw that where we had a core group of pilot teachers. So, that was kind of exciting.
So, you're saying the pilot, the kids that were in the pilot program...
Last, this past school.
Right. So, this year, we should see...
We should see better data, I'm hoping. I'm, I mean, you don't see miracles in a single year, but I'm hoping we do see a greater jump in ELA, because as long as it's implemented with integrity, right? Now, you're always going to have implementation bumps and things like that, but I would expect, yes, based on what the pilot teacher data looked like for ELA. Same thing, if you look at 4th grade Blight ELA, they did well, just in that growth in their MAP especially, like, we're seeing like pockets of where those things were implemented, better scores. So, the cohort data in ELA showed stronger improvements. So, I show grade 3 both years, even though that's not a cohort, just because that jump, and I said, told you I had five more pilot teachers, even though the kids were different, that's a pretty substantial jump in the percentage of meeting and exceeding. And the grade 3 to 4 cohort saw a pretty significant jump as well, smaller jump in 4 to 5, not, not, I would say negligible, but 6 to 7, 7th grade was the other grade level where the pilot was pretty heavy last year, and we saw a huge jump, 10% more of the students meeting and exceeding. And 7th grade, I think I mentioned earlier, had three units of full piloting. And also, the other thing in 7th grade is we had a more consistent team structure. They only had one teacher, one new teacher picking up one section of 7th grade in ELA, and the 8th grade team had two new teachers and four teachers total teaching ELA. And so, that, that collaboration time for the middle school and 8th grade didn't look like the collaboration time in 7th grade for the ELA team, because that common planning time that the teachers get at Hauser, if you're teaching two grade levels, you only can be common plan with one. So, this year, we realigned some of the, the grade level assignments to create more opportunities for collaboration and less people missing from that opportunity in teaching multiple grades, because that's another nuance that can happen. So, in ELA, our, our subgroups, the low-income students really jumped up. I attribute that to consistent quality opportunities, because the reading specialists, you know, not every low-income student is an intervention student, but there are many that are. And our reading specialists had access to all the pilot materials that we were utilizing, And we're able to actually design more targeted interventions using the resources that we had in our hands. So that was kind of cool to see. And EL bilingual students, we have more materials in Spanish through the grant these last few years than we've also had available to some of our EL bilingual students. Not all Hispanic students are EL bilingual, so I want to point that out. We're only six percent EL, but we're thirty percent Hispanic, so it's not all. But the population that needs the Spanish materials is getting that as well in terms of supporting the instruction, so. So student learning in a nutshell, I have a little video I'm going to show you, but I'm going to first talk about the summary, I think, and then go back to the video at the end. The summary is that we do have a strong multi-tiered system of support. We're doing a lot of great things in supporting kids who are at risk for their learning. We have some, I noticed, Dr. Miller, I put early indicators. Because, you know, and Dr. Roche and I were talking earlier, like leading indicators and lagging indicators, right? We have some early indicators in our MAP data that in math, we're seeing some overall percentages of meeting, exceeding, improving. And in PARK in ELA, we're seeing slight percentage increase, even though it's not where it was a couple of years ago. We're still moving in the right direction. Our opportunities are certainly to be more intentional in digging into our data to, at that goal area level, which is why I tried to highlight some of that for you tonight. Is because really that's where the rubber hits the road. When we can take some of that and really dig in deeper to look at where those opportunities are. And then same thing in PARK, especially in mathematics, really digging in and looking at where are those content gaps? And then also what are we getting to or not getting to in our instruction that will help support improving our overall performance? So our next steps are going to be to continue to evaluate the impact of these core program implementations and the high quality instruction we're working towards with differentiation. Using the pre and post assessments in the units of instruction that we now have available to us through these core materials and responding to student growth indicators from the six week data checkpoints that we do with all our students throughout the year. And then continuing to analyze the growth data and identify those needed instructional adjustments, aligning building and district achievement goals to address those opportunities. I set a target for just spring of 2018. MAP, really, I would like, I, I think as a district, I would love to see it at sixty-five percent or more, meeting or exceeding growth. I think we're capable of that. I think we're there in a lot of places. We're not there everywhere. I'd like to see that consistent. And in PARK, I'd like to get back to that sixty percent meeting or exceeding minimally. And I'm setting it attainable. I mean, I could say we could stretch higher, but in one year's time, knowing everything that goes into improving instruction, it's a multi-year initiative. It, it doesn't, we all would love for it to happen overnight just because we have great new tools. But it takes the honing of the craft around those tools to really know what you have at your fingertips to differentiate. They start out just really learning what the core pieces are and then what can they add on and pull to go the up and down those tiers that we talked about earlier. So that takes some time. Teacher collaboration is something we're continuing to look at so that they have time to examine student work and monitor performance through those common assessments and analyzing those results. Our single section buildings are at a disadvantage around that to some degree. They can't have that eight o'clock in the morning conversation about what did you do yesterday? Because there's one of them. So the, you know, those are things that we have to really be intentionally carving out those opportunities to get them, you know, to be able to have as much of that as possible. We've dedicated a lot of our ninety minute PDs and our institute days to just team time this year and not as much new training so that when they're all together like that, we can give them that time to collaborate around student learning. So that's been a real focus for us in those areas. So I want to end with just, it's a four and a half minute video if you can enlighten me. Or if, if not, I can send the link out. But I think this four and a half minute video really captures some of the things the principals are really proud of in their work. And I would hate to just not.
It was a long presentation. It has a lot to go. You asked for four minutes.
Of course.
And then you can think about the question. Do we have secrets?
No.
Yeah. Didn't realize yourself.
Oh, okay. Well, then I will send the link out because then I'll be here. I'll send the link out. Or I didn't realize, most of our contractors have to build in secret. So, okay. I'll send it out to you. I don't think they'll be able to hear it, especially in the public. So I'll post it on the website. I'll post it on the website.
Great.
The whole presentation of the video, so that you can. For example, but basically they talk about these three. These three areas that make the difference. Okay. They talk about the impact of the core programming. They highlight the Math in Focus and the Ready Gen, the Pearson product. And then they talk about the collaboration of the teachers and then also the culture and climate things that are happening at Hauser to kind of provide some of that safe space to take risks for kids. And so hopefully I'll get it linked up in public, please watch it because the principals are really proud of their highlights that they had to share. And unless Kim can really fast go get speakers while I talk about professional development, maybe we'll be able to throw it in there.
Oh, that was the problem. Okay. Okay, all right. So we will send it out as link. All right, so that's student achievement.
Well, thank you for giving the teachers so much team time. I think that's, they're probably really excited.
They're very excited. Well, the notice went out with like how we put it into the PD calendar because we met with all district leadership team and said, what do you think about just kind of making everything team time? They were like jumping up and down.
Makes me want to Skype them in the morning or something from the one section schools. Thank you.
Now, that was one of the adjustments we did make.
Any other questions for Meryl before she moves on to professional development?
I have a question. So just like aside from like the whether, you know, we're talking about fifty-five or fifty-seven percent meet expectations. Those sort of, you know, the things that we're talking about here, the small changes. Where do you think, and your goal for next year is sixty percent meet expectation? So where do you think realistically, we, what, what kind of percentages can we realistically hope to attain over the long run?
If the platform stayed the same? Assuming everything was the same, I think realistically, looking at, you know, the fourteen high performing districts that I looked at, they were falling anywhere. So I looked at Libertyville, I looked at River Forest, I looked at Glenview, I looked at Northbrook. I looked at Lincolnshire is at the highest end with like seventy-five percent. You know, they're in that seventy to seventy-seven percent range. And I have all those scores over here because I was curious just to see. I would say realistically, we could be between sixty-five and seventy. I mean, most of those districts that have like sort of achieved that are in the sixty-sixes, sixty-eights. And actually, I'll, I'll pull it for you because I do have it because I, I was curious. This is really loud.
That is serious. Oh, you are really serious, Kim. I don't mess around.
All right, so I'll go back to that slide and you can maybe start once you get hooked up. So to answer your question, I was looking also at who dipped in, who didn't. But if you look at like our, Martha's former district, River Forest, they're at sixty-nine point seven percent in sixteen and sixty-eight percent this year. This is composite, ELA math, ELA and reading, math combined. Glenview sixty thirty-four, which is another place where I was principal, which I feel is demographically somewhat similar. They have a similar, we have a little higher Hispanic, but their low income is, it, it sort of lays out similarly, but they're larger. Their thirty-five hundred students were seventeen hundred. But they're in the sixty-six percent meeting and exceeding range. Weneca's in sixty-six and this year sixty-nine. Libertyville sixty-four and sixty-three point eight. Glen Allen forty-one, fifty-seven point seven, and then this year fifty-seven point eight. So they're kind of where we are. But Lake Forest is at sixty-six point six this year. Northbrook twenty-eight is at fifty-nine point five. Northbrook thirty-one, fifty-three point eight. Well, Matt sixty-eight. The highest was Deerfield one oh nine, which is at seventy-six point seven percent. But they're flat from the year before. So they didn't, they, they've kind of, they, they didn't grow from fifteen, sixteen to sixteen, seventeen, but they've got a very high percentage meeting and exceeding. Demographically, they don't look so similar, but Amy Rubin, who is their curriculum director, is actually a former colleague of mine. So we talk a lot about things that they're doing and they have a ton of collaboration time built into their system. They're doing a lot of kind of universal design for learning approaches where they're pushing a lot of support into classrooms and not pulling students out as much. And so they're, they're doing things like that to maximize the learning for students. Those are some of their big initiatives is reaching more kids in the core classroom versus doing replacement pullout kinds of things. So she and I just talked last week about that. Apptekisak is at seventy percent meeting and exceeding. So the only district that really hit above that seventy mark was Lincolnshire and Deerfield, which tend to be demographically a little bit different. But most, and Western Springs, I shouldn't say that, Western Springs too, which demographically doesn't have as much diversity there either. So they're like seventy-six percent this year. They were seventy-three percent the year before. But most are falling between that sixty-five, you know, sixty to seventy.
So we get fifteen percent of our kids, basically, which is what, a couple hundred kids, basically, from not meeting to meeting, we will be.
We'll be, yeah, we'll probably be at the higher end. Yeah, at that point, yeah. So we have work to do and I think we can do it. You know, I think we're, we're, I, I expect to see improvements over time. And if we don't, then, then something's wrong. Something more, more is wrong than just, you know, having the right resources, having the right instruction, having the right collaboration, you know.
I just had one comment or question about something that Martha mentioned in the beginning, which is that there is variability. You know, we see that variability within our schools and this, you know, different classes and so forth. And I think it's very, very important that we not have any divergence between the schools. That I think in the past, historically, it's, you know, they're sort of all comparable. And I think, and obviously, it's very important that, you know, we maintain that in, in, in the core academic program. You know, that regardless of where you go to school, it's going to be, you know.
Right, I think resources will help that a lot. I, I do think especially even with the implementation. I don't think we're at a point where you can say consistently, it's looking exactly the same because everyone's.
It wouldn't be exactly the same.
Yeah, no, but I mean, even if the implementation. Because if you think about Math in Focus, especially at an elementary level, right? If you're not a math teacher by trade, how you're teaching math now is not how you learned it and not how you know it. So even our teachers who aren't necessarily inherently math people have to relearn how to teach math to some degree. But teachers who are inherently math, have that math aptitude, are quicker to, to pick up on how those concepts are being taught and might be able to do it more adeptly. And that's why the collaboration is so critical so that they're, they're sharing and working it out, you know. It was really interesting, fourth grade teaches division with conceptually. And then when they get to fifth grade, they get to the algorithm procedurally. And what was happening is kids were forgetting the zero placeholder when they started divide to the next place value, when it was a multi-digit number. And they didn't teach that in fourth grade, but fifth grade sort of assumed because the old procedural way, fourth graders would have known that. And so the assumption was, oh, they know that. And then they realized they didn't and they had to go back and sort of make the transition for them. So it's those kinds of things, having a new program, not recognizing like, oh, wait a minute. You know, vertically, we were in the Blythe Park library and the teachers were having a vertical conversation and collaborating around mathematics. And the fourth grade teacher said, oh, no, you know, in our scope and sequence now, it's not what we address and this is how we do it. And then the fifth grade teacher said, oh, my gosh, I can make that connection in two seconds tomorrow. Thank you. So it's those kinds of things, you know, that we need to keep working towards.
Wouldn't it help when, you know, principals hire, especially at a small school, that we have a core team that has a diversification of skills? Like to make sure we've kind of covered the board so that they can communicate and, you know, hey, this person in the building can really help with math instruction.
Yeah, that's, it's an interesting question in terms of.
They don't have time to collaborate.
If they've had the opportunity to.
Opportunities because they're one section.
An opportunity to hire and reconfigure, you know.
I mean, not that we're doing that, you know, in bulk, but I'm just thinking, oh, that would be neat to make sure we're diverse staff.
And we try at a grade level at least to identify those experts so that when they are together, we can do that.
Well, I was gonna say, I think both Kim and Kasmir have created unique structures to build and support collaboration with specialists and because they don't have that, you know, sort of what we call kind of that horizontal grade level team. But creating those opportunities within the, you said, the vertical team, but also all the specialists that are brought to bear on student success. And I think it's, you know, kudos to Kim and Kasmir for kind of figuring out like, how do we do that? And I think the six ninety minute PDs are another opportunity. I don't think they're enough.
They're not enough, probably. We talk about that a lot. We talk about that need to carve out more time for collaboration, especially given our structure because it's unique.
Yeah.
Did you, you think you figured it out? Don't do karaoke, though. It's late and they're tired. And karaoke is, it's a little late and they're tired. Don't, don't break out into song.
During this time, classroom teachers, the math interventionists, especially in the area of mathematics, is a school goal for Blythe Park. Blythe Park teachers may be played as a collective group to plan and provide math instruction. During this time, classroom teachers, the math interventionists, buts, EL, resource teachers, and even the reading specialists, plan an instruction that effectively supports all students. Although their specific roles are different, every teacher shares a common objective to ensure that each Blythe Park student receives a more individualized learning experience by enhancing the quality and efficiency by which they respond to students' unique needs. Teachers regularly monitor student learning through quick comprehension checks or form an assessment. And the results of these assessments drive the pace and structure of daily math instruction. Through the guided math structure, Blythe Park teachers have already seen an increase in student engagement. Students are more willing to share ideas and explain their thinking around them. And teachers can readily recognize who is on track and who needs additional supports. Overall, the collaborative structure of the weekly planning sessions has been a positive shift that has been well received by both staff and students.
In the fall of 2016, the group of District Ninety-Six teachers piloted Ready Gen as a core resource to teach the language arts standards. Ready Gen's integrated and well-balanced approach to reading and writing, coupled with high-quality teaching, resulted in higher park scores in classrooms where Ready Gen was used as the core resource. This was magnified at Central School in third grade, where all four classroom teachers piloted Ready Gen for at least half of the 2016-17 school year.
Collaboration time is something that District Ninety-Six values to support teachers. When teachers have time to meet, co-plan, and discuss supports for students, we're better able to meet individual needs that support student success in our multi-tiered system of support. The idea behind co-planning and collaboration among teachers is to share ideas and strategies that lead to improved teaching and learning for students.
One of the major shifts in math education in District Ninety-Six in the past couple of school years is the implementation of Math in Focus. Through the Math in Focus program, teachers are now seen as the facilitators and conductors of learning. Since the implementation of this program, we have seen many benefits in student learning in A.I.'s school. All concepts taught start with a hands-on experience. Students are able to manipulate, ask questions, and build an understanding with their own tactile practice. Students have a greater ability to discuss and explain their thinking and reasoning rather than just know the answer through our math talks. With these opportunities to share their thinking, students have the opportunity to verbalize their thoughts in regards to mathematical concepts and reasoning. Students are learning with a greater retention due to the extended amount of time spent on fewer concepts. As one of my new teachers has told me, I could light an entire city with the amount of light bulbs popping on each day. Math is thinking, math is persevering, math is finally in focus for our students.
Middle school is a time filled with changes for students. In an effort to reach and teach the whole child, Hauser has increased our focus on building communities. Our social studies teachers are using facing history to share important concepts, allowing students to examine their own views and values as they learn about history. All of our Cooper Connection classes have embraced sharing circles. This is a time when students learn to respect one another and build upon the relationships within the classroom. Many staff have integrated these circles into their curricular areas. This focus on creating a positive climate and respect in the classroom leads to increased learning as there are less distractions within the classroom community.
So that was it. And those are the things that you can't quantify, you realize that. But there are things that you can really, you know, what we do every day.
And just so you know, the things that each of them highlighted aren't, aren't unique to their own buildings. They're happening across the district. So I know Central, Mr. Gatz talked about his fourth grade team and how they're pushing everybody. And same thing, we're doing these things in every building in some way, but they chose the one that most resonated with them in the work around their school goals and the things that they're doing. So thank you. I know it was long, but it's a really important topic. I was really ambitious when I said thirty minutes. How about professional development update takes two? Because I gave you a memo on your packet that just highlighted the things we've accomplished since the beginning of the school year with our October Institute Day that we had, which was a half day, on some of the things that we tackled during that half day. And again, we recognize the variability of something technical like Power School versus something that's hands-on, you know, around looking at student work or teacher evaluation. But overall, we're continuing to provide things that teachers really need and, and they're seeming to appreciate. But overall, we're continuing to provide things that teachers really need and they're seeming to appreciate that, so. Any other questions? No? Okay, we'll continue to the work. I will do that analysis on MTSS kids with respect to park scores. That would be an interesting kind of dig. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mary. We're gonna pass it on to Mr. Hunt for policy.
Okay. Let's see, there were a couple new policies that, existing policies, I should say, that some suggested edits had come back, not through traditional sources, but I think this was through a special education seminar that Pam Shaw had provided information on. And I think in particular, these two policies, one of them, Policy Six One Twenty, Education of Children with Disabilities. And the second policy was Policy Seven One Ninety, Student Behavior. The main emphasis or the focus of the proposed changes has to center around the increased prevalence of something like called a GPS locator device or, and the increased capabilities of these devices where students, you know, previously you'd think of GPS locator as just a simple location device, but they're increasingly getting more and more capabilities in terms of capturing sound and even video. And I believe is, was reading and I think that it has a possibility of being incorporated into, especially with students with special needs, into some of their IEPs. So, Martha, could you shed some additional light on that?
You have a nice explanation. I'm gonna actually ask Pam, who was at the workshop, that we were advised by attorney to sort of add this language into our policy.
I would just rather update it and number of policies.
Can you come to the microphone just a second?
Oh, Pam, can you come to the microphone?
Yes, some of the technology has changed over the years from what is in the board policies. And there is a new, it's a safety device that some parents have for children to, for children who may elope, students who tend to run off, which is a tractor, a tracker that they put on, like GPS tracker for safety. I believe one of them has a name of Angel, something or other, is the device. But the concern is that it also may pick up conversations in the classroom around the children and it may be a concern about privacy of other students as well. So, that's why it was suggested that that be added. We still want to keep children safe, but we need to protect other students in the classroom too.
I think the recommended changes was that, what, the video functions and sound functions be shut off.
Right, that they can be shut off during the day.
Right, because it's not its intent when they're using it at school, right?
Pardon?
That's not really what the intent is for when they use it at school, right?
No, it's actually something that schools don't tend to use, but parents have their child wear it as a safety mechanism. But under school, since, you know, we keep children very safe and there's lots of hands-on, so.
Okay.
And that was Policy Seven One Ninety. Were there any proposed changes to Six One Twenty? Or is that just there for information or...
So, Six One Twenty sort of links in the same way. It just refers to the audio and video recording and then...
But no changes on that one?
Right. The yellow highlighted area is changed, right? Yeah.
Mine isn't yellow. Are mine?
Mine's yellow.
Mine's yellow. Maybe it's just me.
Six One Twenty, in the Six One Twenty?
Six One Twenty.
So, Six One Twenty is a yellow highlight and then Seven One Ninety?
I'm, I don't know, mine is not yellow.
And the Seven One Ninety is red.
Okay, but I see the...
Well, that's so funny, because, yeah, mine is...
Some are yellow and some are not.
That's alright. This is how it prints out.
Yes, it's this last paragraph.
So, this is new?
The last paragraph.
This is new.
No, mine isn't yellow.
That's so strange.
Yeah, that is strange. I'll have to figure why that happened.
Yeah, I was looking at it saying, where's the change?
I do wonder though, I mean, I guess given the proposed proposal or how these are, this has been brought up, do we have any affected students using these devices these days? Okay.
But I think that was the legal advice is to be proactive about it before it's creating a concern or a problem is just to be clear in policy, sort of an awareness and understanding of what those devices can or shouldn't be doing in a school setting.
So, if you had someone that knew, then you would communicate with the parent and say, oh, just so you know, we need this turned off and, yeah, okay.
And then question I had is, well, I think it mentions a device specifically, I think Angel Serv or something like that.
That was one of the brands.
And maybe that's the one that's just more accessible to the educational community or, so I imagine there would be others.
Actually, it's more, I think, of a device that parents...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. You're right. Okay. And we included a third policy here, Policy Eight Twenty, for community use of school facilities. And this is in response to recent activity we had at Hauser last time around. I think had brought up that possibly some board members might want to discuss that.
Right, so this is our current, this is our current policy. Without any recommendations, revisions, or anything attached to it, it's just an opportunity to review, to know that we do have in policy guidelines, policy, more than guidelines, we have actual policy around community use of the school facilities, particularly during the school day. And if people felt that this policy needed additional attention, it's something we could discuss.
You know, I was one of those board members that thought this policy should be reexamined, given sort of what happened at Hauser. I guess one thing, I read the policy and I guess the one thing that I noticed that's missing, there's really no conditions on notification of the village, to the district, that I think the policy should states, give some parameters around, you don't call in the morning expecting access to the school in the afternoon or in the evening, that we should probably put in some parameters around that. Also, I was sort of thinking that we should also put in some parameters around who can approve this type. I know there's talks in there about the superintendent, but it didn't seem too tight to me, though I'd like to discuss that if people are, have different opinion on that. And I, one thing I would, I know it states in the policy, but I'd like to make it a little bit more clear that there shouldn't be any disruption to the education of students or school functions. I know that states it loosely in there, but I think we really need to sort of drive that home that... I even might even consider going so far as saying that nothing can happen during school hours. I mean, I do realize we have special activities afterwards, but...
Which is not, nothing can happen during school hours, which is not directly for the purpose of educating kids.
Exactly. Correct. Right.
I actually agree with all three of your points on that. So, we wanted to, I would favor strengthening this policy a bit along that, along those lines.
Can I ask if that, besides the part that we're talking about at Hauser, does that normally happen? Nothing I can think of that groups come in or, I understand tightening it, but what is the current status of how that functions for us? Do groups come in?
I'm trying to, you know, in my year and a half now, I'm trying to think of examples and I'm...
I was too, other than this one, is it?
Yeah, I'm looking at you, Kim, as a principal, you know, in your little Hollywood school. Have you had times where you feel like you've had to turn people away because they're asking? I mean, my sense is people know school, you know, during school hours, you know, education of our students is obviously our top priority and that we're, we're not sitting with a lot of lavish and extra space to share.
We have not been, space has not been requested during school hours, except for PTA meetings. But no...
Election, yeah, the election, yeah.
That's true. That's true.
Right, right.
We don't have freedom to choose that.
That's right. Now, with the Hauser situation, do we, can I just clarify, does that group that came in fit with the wording? Is that...
Yes, I think, yeah.
I guess the question is whether interfered with the school function. I mean, I think that's sort of vague and I agree with what Dave is saying, what I think Dave is saying, which is that if it could be distracting at all, I mean, if it's not directly related to something that students are doing and it could be a distraction, which certainly I think is...
Well, and then the classrooms have windows and can see right in the hallway. I mean, it's very obvious, yeah. I'm okay with tightening it. What about the rest of you guys?
I did wonder if, you know, considering we just initiated that agreement with the village, if it had this, had anything to do with that?
That was more information sharing rather than use of facilities, though.
Right, but I think there was a sense when they asked that maybe because of the agreement, we were supposed to be more, more quick to agree. And I think that was a misunderstanding, but... So, it didn't really, but I think it kind of did, if that makes sense.
I have a question about prior approval. How much approval do we want to talk about? Because it's prior for them, I'd say, well, we came the morning and then that's before we wanted to do it. And what does the board consider enough prior approval? Is it twenty-four hours? Is it a week? Is it, you know, something more vague, appropriate?
I guess that's what happened at Hauser. They didn't wake up in the morning thinking, oh, we're gonna do this.
They must have known.
This is planned. And so, I mean, I don't, I think twenty-four hours is too short. I mean, you don't sort of walk in thinking you need something right away. I think at a minimum, forty-eight hours. I don't even go as far as a week, but I'm talking forty-eight hours. I'm talking school days, not...
Yeah, I think something along those lines, a couple of days or a week seems reasonable. I think, personally, I think the default should always be no. I mean, if we're unsure.
Right.
This is the purpose of the school, has one core function.
Well, I definitely, I like the point you brought up of mentioning nothing that's not related to educational, I guess, that would like, would hate to turn away folks coming in, making presentation of something.
That's right.
Right.
I wonder though, is there something, some other situation that we might miss by instituting a blanket ban for all other potentials?
I know.
I think, I'm, I think possibly in the minority here. I think we have the language here. I think with the Hauser situation, we had a issue in communication where the superintendent was unavailable at the time and a decision was made to... We're talking about the police, right? And a situation where designees made the wrong decision. And it's more of a educating our designees rather than an issue with what the superintendent can decide. The superintendent here requires prior approval. At her discretion, if she makes the decision that it's a no, it's a no and there's no other, there's no appeal to that.
I think that's, what you're saying is totally right. I think the advantage of having a stronger policy though is that when we get personnel changes, which happen all the time, hopefully not so much in the near future, but...
Hopefully not.
We don't have to, the policy would be clear. It's like, yes, this is the policy.
Or if someone is out and somebody who's not used to being a designee, somebody becomes a designee, they need to know what to do, you know.
And I will send, talking to the police chief. He felt that all non-emergency requests should go between the superintendent and the police chief. You know, even if we're, if there's good chances that we're unavailable, either one of us for different reasons, and that then non-emergency items would just wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I feel like I would go either way, tightening it or not tightening it, because it sounds like the procedures are up to date after that incident. So, I can see the benefits of tightening the policy, but I also, you know, I don't think tightening the policy is gonna change anything, but for future, sure, you know, there's no harm to it.
In the past, when we modified policy, we usually had sort of put it back on the policy chair and on the superintendent to sort of make recommendations, like think about the language, maybe some improvement to bring it back for further discussion. Is that seem reasonable or...
Yeah.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Are there any other policy?
Uh, no, I have nothing further.
Do you have a video?
That's kids trick or treating my side.
Can't drive. Spice them up a little bit.
No, I like the video.
So, Rich is not here, so just ask whether Mr. Holmes has anything to add about the tax levy?
So, any changes from the, from the last board meeting on October eighteenth? However, I did want you to refer to the page four of the twelve-page packet, which is the tax levy dashboard. And if you look where column G intersects, intersects the aggregate levy, this is the percent increase of the proposed levy over the two thousand and sixteen extension. This three percent increase is what will be published in the local paper in the Truth and Taxation. Please note per statute only if the increase is five percent or greater, does a notice of the hearing. And the hearing, the notice and the hearing need to legally take place. However, it's been the policy of the school board to go ahead and publish the notice and do the hearing.
Just a general comment, I think that's appropriate in terms of communicating with...
Communication and transparency.
Why not? Right.
And the final item I would like to point out is on pages ten and eleven, the resolution authorizing the reduction of certain levies for the two thousand and seventeen year. Due to the elimination of the three dollars and fifty cent tax rate ceiling of the education fund, I increased the levy request in the education fund the most of any fund. After all, the goal of the district is to provide the best possible education for all the students. And so, that's, that works out well. And I further requested that any reductions to any of the levies would come out of the education fund. Last year, the district asked for the Cook County Treasurer, Cook County Clerk to reduce the transportation fund and the viability insurance, viability insurance fund. That's all I really had to say. If there are any questions?
Alright, thanks for...
Thank you.
Alright, so are there any other things people would like to talk about here, any other points on the levy? If not, then future meeting dates are November fifteenth with the regular business meeting, seven PM at Hauser. December sixth, committee of the whole meeting, seven PM at Ames. And December twentieth, the regular business meeting, seven PM at Hauser. So, the business meeting.